We're good to you. All right. Looks like we have a quorum of everyone, so I'll call this meeting of the Reston Association Board of Directors' Order. Before we dive in, I just want to take a quick moment to go over the ground rules for how we'll handle discussion and debate. Each director can speak up to two times on any motion, on any single motion, but only after everyone's had a chance to speak once. That way, we can keep things moving, but everyone will still have the opportunity to speak. Please keep your comments focused on the issue we're discussing. Any personal attacks or interruptions aren't acceptable, and all remarks, even the most colorful ones, need to be directed to the chair. No side conversations, please, and if you'd like to speak, please wait to be recognized. If these rules aren't followed, I will step in and call violation out of order so we can keep the meeting moving smoothly. All right. So I also note that there are a number of people attending this evening. Welcome to everyone. I'm sure I know why you're here, your matching t-shirts, giving me some clues, but I want to thank each of you, as well as all the people who've written to RA over the past couple of days, for participating in the governance of Reston Association. Your engagement is how we are able to make progress, and I look forward to more of it on a wide variety of topics in the future. So just a couple of announcements I wanted to bring up, but I'd like to get back to that if you'll all indulge me. I'd like to move on to the approval of the agenda, if we could.
Mr. President, I move to adopt the draft agenda that was published with a change in place of the committee resolution at item F? I think that's right. G? Oh, that's right, we already flipped them. I'd like to put in a discussion about Reston National Golf Course.
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor? Looks like that's unanimous of all in attendance.
Mr. President, can I inquire? I was given to understand that Mr. Flashman was going to join us.
No, he called me today, and he said he wasn't going to be able to...
At all.
At all.
Thank you. So we have...
You've got a seven-member...
We have seven members.
Yes.
And we're glad to see that Director Perry was able to join us after an absence, or joining us remotely for many, many months, so glad to see you back.
All right. So let's move on to member comments, if we could, please, Brittany.
First up, we have Supervisor Walter Alcorn.
Chairman. All right, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm Walter Alcorn. I'm an RA member and reside at 11716 Great Circle. I'm handing out some information. I wanted to provide a quick update and news on Reston Town Center North.
Thank you.
On April 30th, so about 10 days ago, Fairfax County and Inova resubmitted development plans for their joint rezoning application to Reston Town Center North. It's a big step, and it's been really over a decade in the making. So the slides that I'm sending around have some additional background information. Slide number two in particular shows the existing parcel ownership in Reston Town Center North, which is kind of a mess, frankly. And reconfiguring the parcel boundaries into developable blocks is really the first step towards redevelopment, including the redevelopment of the Reston Regional Library and also the Embry-Rucker Shelter, which are big priorities of mine. So additional information in the slides, slides three through seven, provide a lot more information, including how we kind of got to where we are today, the 2014 master plan, which had a design that DRB didn't like. That was changed in the update to the Reston Comprehensive Plan, which I know some of you know that process very well, in 2023. And this will formalize that layout in the zoning ordinance, in the approved zoning. So I think we're all familiar with that. It also has some information about open space. The county has, of course, the 2016 MOU with the Reston Association with minimum amounts of open space. Those are shown in there. And then what this does not include, and this is important, it does not show buildings. So it shows the focus is to formalize, again, the DRB-approved lot and block layout. And detailed engineering of the streets and blocks has been completed for this application as well as for the Central Green, but the buildings will come later. This is really the engineering part, and also will facilitate the land swap, which has to happen between the county and Inova. So I want to thank Reston Association for your partnership on this and several other things, including maybe a thing or two you have coming up later in your agenda, and appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Question for the speaker.
I'm sorry, I'm going to pause. We typically don't do questions of member comments.
Normally, we don't have the supervisor standing in front of us. So if I... And we have asked questions of speakers.
He's representing a member.
Are you fine with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So you had a task force on this project, and unfortunately, despite repeated requests, Reston Association did not have any representation on that task force. And what I'm surprised by in looking at the proffers, that fundamentally, they're written by the attorney for Inova, and there is no conversation about the parcels that won't be developed immediately. In some cases, the park authority inside Jim isn't going to be bonded till 2050. There's no bonding for the school site, there's no bonding for the athletic field. So we're looking at decades of those parcels being unused or warehoused or land-banked. I'm wondering when in this zoning process you anticipate us having some sense of how those properties are going to be used for the next 40, 50, 60 years before the bonds are actually sold for, if the school is ever needed, and we've had conversations about the unlikely of that. But there's a lot of property here, a lot of acreage here, that has no anticipated use in the near term. We're talking decades.
Yeah, the Comprehensive Plan includes basically the public facilities that'll go into this. Reston Association was a part of that process. The Reston Town Center North Task Force was only to decide where the public facilities should go inside these different blocks. This basically will only show, again, formalizing the block layouts, but I would expect at a future, as additional rezonings come through, there'll be discussion of the timing on when specific public facilities will happen, and frankly, what's going to happen between now and then, because interim uses are something, frankly, that we don't have funding for, but there are clearly additional public uses that need to be identified for some of these properties.
I too read the proffers, although I will continue to read them because there are several pages, but I would ask if you could take a look at the proffer related to associations, owner associations. There's no mention regarding Reston Association in that entire proffer, but this is covenant land, and so that was very surprising for me. Also, I would ask if you could consider, a lot of the proffers spoke to, after this rezoning application came through, not having to come back for county, future county approval. But as you had mentioned, we are many years away from actually having parcels planned, and that is very unusual to me, that proffers would read, "Once this is done, we get to build what we want without coming back," and that's how they read to me. Like I said, I will continue to study them, but that was surprising. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just very quickly, on the first one, this is all RA property. Happy to clarify that, but it's, doesn't matter what the county does, this will remain property, all of it, in the Reston Association. And happy to look at that proffer language. That's certainly not the intent. The intent is any building that gets built on this property would basically have to come back through the zoning process and also to the DRB and whatever procedures Reston Association sets forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Brittany?
Next, we have Eric Goplerud.
Hello, I'm Eric Goplerud. I'm an RA member, and I live at 1606 North Village Road here in Reston. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Environmental Advisory Council. This memo and letter has been shared with you previously today. The RA Environmental Advisory Council is aware of the recent offers made by owners of the Reston National Golf Course. The EAC members are unanimously opposed to any endorsement by RA of plans for residential development of the existing golf course properties. We have not done a detailed assessment of the owners' two plans, however, there are three macro-level issues which we want to point out. First, the loss of existing environmental benefits from an urban golf course that an urban golf course provides. Second, the direct adverse impacts from development. And third, the longer-term impacts, indirect impacts generated by residents of 288 to 800 new homes on the property. I can go into more detail, the detail has been provided in the memo that you received. However, one of the points we wanted to make sure is put forward is that the current environmental benefits of urban golf courses are substantial, and that the Reston National Golf Course is one of only 29 Virginia courses that have met the rigorous standards of the Audubon Society for program certification. That includes proper turf management, reducing runoff from nutrients of all sorts. The direct impact of the development would be substantial. The duration of construction is not specified, but it's not unusual for these kind of developments to require closing of two years or more as the development takes place. That would have substantial impacts on the environment and on the previous surfaces. Again, the memo lays out in more detail, and the EAC would be happy to do a more detailed analysis, if directed by the RA Board, of these two proposals or any of the other proposals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, Mr. Goplerud?
No.
I think there may be questions.
I just was going to ask for, without objection, I'd love to include the report we received via email today as part of the minutes, so it would benefit the rest of the association to be able to read.
Are there any objections? Let's do that, then. Thank you.
Mr. President, I wanted to thank the Environmental Advisory Committee for producing this. Over the last several years, as we've had this ongoing controversy about Reston National Golf Course, many members have come to me and said, "We need to get rid of the golf course, it's an environmental hazard." This memo lays out in detail why this golf course is an environmental asset.
Yes.
It should be preserved. And I have already sent it to several of my friends who have taken a different position on that. So I want to thank the EAC for all of the hard work in putting this together. It's very informative, it strengthens an argument that says we need to keep both golf courses in, as golf courses. So I thank the EAC, and I ask you to convey our thanks back to that committee, and I think the entire board joins me in that.
We do, thank you.
Thank you, I certainly will. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. William Peniman.
Thank you. I'm Bill Peniman. I live at 2007 Upper Lake Drive. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a 21-year resident and member of RA. I've been on the last two master plan task forces, I've been on the P&amp;Z Committee for the last 12 years, and I'm a longtime member of the RCC Board of Governors. I'm here because I fervently support the preservation and for possible enhancement of open space, but only if it's truly accessible to Reston residents. And what I fear is that fighting to the bitter end, as many people urge you to do, will result in a bitter end, a fenced golf course that is, has an ugly fence that no one can get past to use this space, and eventually, it'll be converted to a members-only golf course. And if they win the buy-right application, I don't know that they would, they could also get their development, too. I think it behooves RA to protect its members best by seeking a negotiated solution, at least reaching out, talking to them. If you do that, then hopefully, you can persuade them that a deal would include cutting in half the amount of space used to develop and increasing the amount of permanent open space that everybody could use 24 hours, not 24 hours a day probably, but all day, every day, all year, not just when the golfers are at home in bed. It would be better, more usable, open space. But to get there, you need, I urge the Board, to work with the developer and approach the Commissioner, Supervisor Alcorn, the Planning Commission, and the staff to ask that this be moved from the dead-end tier of the staff's recommendation to at least Tier Three or Tier Two, so negotiations can occur, and if successful, proceed with something that would be mutually beneficial. I don't know if it'd be successful, but it could be. RA could at the same time ask and expect the developer to put a hold on any further fencing, to put a hold on moves that would jeopardize the future. And in the negotiations, it could and should prioritize preserving space, not getting a donation from the developer. I think a fair solution would be to cut in half the amount of open space they use for development, concentrate it up near the corner of Colts Neck and Sunrise Valley, basically running along two roads that have development across the street anyway. And what you could get is open space that RA potentially could control, and you could guarantee that the natural values are preserved, that the lake is better protected from runoff from fertilizer and pesticides, and that other uses could be made that the community could really enjoy, play areas, picnic areas, possibly areas where there are new courts for pickleball or something. There's a host of possibilities if you return it to nature. I don't really care, as long as it remains 100, as long as everything we can keep remains open to Reston residents, and I don't think people understand the risk that we will lose it, including building a fence without further permissions needed. Thank you.
Next, we have Tom Hogan.
Good evening. My name is Tom Hogan. I live at 2021 Soapstone Drive here in Reston. My wife and I have lived here for 44 years, and our daughter, her family, and my two grandchildren, our two grandchildren, live here as well. I found the tone and tenor of the letter from the real estate developer's lawyer to be alarming and somewhat confrontational. I thought that the tone and tenor of it was implied this is a take-it-or-leave-it offer, and next time, you won't be able to perhaps get as good a deal. Be that as it may, I suspect that is not the last letter we will receive from Mr. Looney, nor the last iteration of the deals that are on the table, and there are a couple of things that I would request that the ROER Board do for the residents. I don't intend to be confrontational or challenging, and I certainly recognize you are not the problem or the issue here. But the lawyer has indicated that in surveying other homeowners' associations in Fairfax County, that the annexation value would be typically between $10,000 and $20,000. Now, that may be 100% accurate. It's hard to believe that it could be, because this is going to be a state-of-the-art estimation kind of thing with all kinds of variables. But the lawyer is engaging in what we all are familiar with, the car salesman as anchoring. $5,000 to $10,000 now seems to be the realistic basis from which you proceed. I suspect in Fairfax County, there is not another homeowners' association, geographical size of Reston, the population of Reston, and the huge capital infrastructure investment we have made here in Reston. And it may be that if that were evaluated not as part of an amalgamation of all the county's homeowners' associations, what would Reston's actual annexation value be? It might be $15,000 to $25,000. And if that does, that certainly changes the tone and tenor of any discussions we would have and what is reasonable with this developer. That would be helpful if the Board could embark on some kind of survey, and I'm sure your staff is eminently capable of doing that. The second thing that would be helpful to us, me as a layperson, is suppose we had a $4 million agreement, $4 million is what we would get at the $5,000 annexation value. Now, the lawyer's letter, and I am not a lawyer, but that lawyer's letter, he is a very skilled advocate, and in the letter, we would get $4 million less any improvements that had to be made by the county for OSEPs to comply with zoning, to comply with construction requirements and so forth. Suppose we get $2 million. The figures are not important, the principle is. It would be helpful to me as a resident to know, if ROER were given $2 million or $4 million, what does that actually represent? Is that a swimming pool? Is that a swimming pool and two tennis courts? A swimming pool, two tennis courts, and a quarter-mile of pathway for access and egress to the new material? And does the staff, I'm sure, also has places identified...
I'm sorry, sir, the music indicated that your time is up. I appreciate it, though.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Joe Layton.
I'm Joe Layton. I live at 2033 Approach Lane, and my home is on the Reston National Golf Course. My five children grew up living next to the golf course. As a result, my daughter and son became avid golf players. My son, when he lived in Reston, played on this golf course with friends who also lived on the golf course. My son now lives in Richmond. This week, he played in a four-golf tournament and played golf two other days. By living next to the golf course, my son became an avid golf player. If he had not lived on a golf course, he would never have become an avid golf player. Nobody would want to play golf on Reston National during construction of the 780 townhomes. This development will destroy a very nice immunity Reston has. And nice townhomes can be built anywhere, but Reston Golf Course, once it's gone, it's gone forever. And also, a friend of my son, who also grew up, you know, on the golf course, plays golf in Richmond, he takes out clients in order to do business, and he enjoys golf. So being next to a golf course, you have a nice amenity of being able to play golf. And my two of my children became active golfers just because they lived on the golf course. So that's very important, that the two golf courses remain here, because we can't afford to use that amenity. And one last thing, I want to congratulate Travis Johnson on being elected president, and translate Izzy on being elected vice president.
Thank you very much.
And the last person we have signed up to speak this evening is Sean Inslee.
Good evening. My name is Sean Inslee, and I live at 11400 Summer House Court in the Baldwin Grove Cluster. I'm here this evening to ask the Board of Directors to reiterate its opposition to the proposed development of the Reston National Golf Course, or Reston National. I will not repeat the myriad reasons to oppose that development, such as density and increased traffic, among other reasons. Other commentators have raised those concerns, and I support those reasons. I'll ask the Board to consider another reason to reject development. The American Heritage Dictionary states the following: "Something such as money offered to a person in a position of trust to influence that person's views or conduct." That is the definition of a bribe. I recognize that the Reston Association Board would never consider or consent to such an entreaty, but the golf course bribe to Reston Association is a blatant attempt by the owners of Reston National to circumvent the overwhelming public opposition and Fairfax County staff opposition to development at Reston National. That opposition was expressed by the public at the recent site-specific plan amendment meeting, where the proposed Reston National development was explained to the public. The development arguments have fallen flat with the Reston community, including members. I ask that you reiterate your opposition to the Reston National development and reject the golf course bribe. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone online this evening who would like to make a member comment, please raise your hand or send me a message in the chat.
And is there anyone in the room who'd like to...
There's one more.
Okay. Please. If you could state your name and address, please.
Technically, you can give your address, Brittany.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. I'm Jennifer Juszczyk. My address is 2010 Upper Lake Drive, and I am speaking now as a member, so I can share my personal feelings and my thoughts and my opinions. But the moment I sat at the table where I just was, my personal interests must be put aside, because the RA Board has the responsibility that individual members do not carry. That's the duty of care, loyalty, and fiduciary responsibilities to the association. As a member, I expect that the RA Board and staff will do everything in its power to fulfill the purposes of the association. Specifically, in the D, Article Section 3.2 B, D, and E, which I have passed around a hard copy of, speaks to our purpose. It speaks to our purpose on land use matters, it speaks to our role in the welfare of our members, as well as for the benefit of the association and its property. As the Board reflects on this responsibility, I'm asking two specific actions. First... First, over the last 45 days, we've had two incidents, or at least two incidents, in which information the association has been entrusted with has been used or withheld to advance the personal agendas and self-interests at the expense of the peace, harmony, and welfare of this community. I expect that the perpetrators resign their positions and that the Board will take any and all actions within their power to set us on the right path. Second, I ask that the RA Board set a course for RA to be our leader in all land use matters within Reston. This requires that the association gather information, communicate the facts, elicit member feedback, provide all the pros and cons to our members so that the Board can truly fulfill its duty to the association and effectively advocate for those positions. As individual members, we can walk away from conversations that we don't like or choose what we want to believe, but the Board cannot. The Board must pursue the facts in order to consider the best interests of the association and fulfill its purpose. There is a fact with the golf course that is inconvenient, but we must all acknowledge it is privately owned space. When we veer off the RA paths and walk our dogs at night or take my daughter sledding in the winter, I'm technically trespassing. This has gone on for many years. We have fought this battle many times. But now we face a neighbor, a neighboring owner threatening to fence us out, and this neighbor may have that right to do so.
I'm sorry, Director Juszczyk. I'm going to have to cut the time. If you want to wrap it up.
Can I finish?
Thank you.
I don't like the situation that all Restonians face, but if the Board is not at the table and actively engaged, RA cannot help us. Please, become actively engaged. Go after the PRC ordinance. It was there. It was created for us, and it's there to protect us, and it needs to remain strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? I see two hands attached to two separate people.
My name is Christine Heine. I live at 11745 Indian Ridge Road, so I'm directly on the golf course. I've lived there for almost 33 years, and my late husband was there before. So we've been Reston Association paying dues members for many, many years. I just wanted to strongly state my objection to any change of the RA in its position to oppose the golf course expansion, to develop it. I'm alarmed by reports that Reston National's been offering a considerable sum of money in annexation fees for the Board's agreement or concession. And this amounts to a bribe, as another person said recently. And I urge you to turn what certainly smells illegal, turn it down. Any RA Board member who accepts this proposal will be traitors to all that Reston has stood for since its founding in 1964 and betray every one of us who's invested our lives and our capital in the dream and promise of Reston as a place to live, grow, and play. Please do not accept this deal under any terms. As you know full well, since its inception, Reston National Golf Course, which when I first moved here was Reston International Golf Course, has been part of the open natural space in Reston, and that's what makes our community livable, attractive, and special. Any townhouse or other housing accommodations built upon this open space will have many short and long-term deleterious effects on the community, as you've heard from other speakers. I'm not going to go into those. But I urge you to stand firmly against this. Whatever you need to do to prevent a fence from going up, fine, but do not give in to this bribe to allow the developers to go forward. If they can't make it, they overpaid for it. They should have allowed developers in who wanted to buy it years ago. Don't give in to them because we can't trust them. Thank you.
Thank you. And there was one other person I saw who had their hand up.
My name is Marsha Christian. I live at 2002 Lake Breeze Way. It's not right on the golf course, but it's part of the community. And I don't have prepared remarks, but I just want to say they made a mistake. They bought this property. They said, I remember hearing that. They said, "We only buy property that can be developed. Therefore, it can be developed." Do you remember that argument? It was just completely circular. Now they say, "We can pay money for it. Therefore, it can be developed." That doesn't fly either with me. Mix it. Listen to the rest of my team.
Thank you very much.
Connie Hartke speaking as President of Rescue Reston. I just feel that a couple of things need to be answered. One, the fences. I've been getting feedback on some of the fencing that's gone up. I've sat myself on a nice bench behind Woodwin's one. Maybe it's hole number five. Paul and I sat there and watched a couple hole out one evening. The fence is not that tall. It's nice looking. I've had some other members say, "We can live with this." Just like when the owners of Reston National started letting the grass grow along the edges, thinking that would make the members around it angry and give in. Well, it didn't work. All right, we got some tall grass. We can live with that. The fencing isn't doing it either. So don't go off on that. It'll be inconvenient, but it is their property. And there's lots of breaks, and we'll make sure the turtles can get through on some of the places that need that. I want to mention about the dreams of, oh, gosh, if we could just make it a park. If we could just put some athletic fields on low-lying flood plain, which, by the way, I've got the historical document where they talk about why the golf courses were put in place. Build on the high ground and leave the natural contours and leave the permeable space for, as the environmental people say, if you put athletic fields on it, they won't be usable half the time like that one at someplace in South Reston. What's it called?
Barton Hill.
Yeah. The Barton Hill soccer field is not great because it's flooded a lot. So, oh, well, what do you do? Put artificial turf on? Well, that just makes everything pour into the lake. If anyone's ever been to Glenstone Museum over in Potomac, where really rich people bought it, they've made it fabulous. It's free. I suggest you go if you haven't been, and it's a tax write-off for them. And if we could find a philanthropist like that to do that at Reston National, that would be fabulous. But the park authority is not going to take it on. Reston Association's not going to take it on. Nova Parks isn't going to take it on. It costs money, people. Over at American Dream Way, where the townhomes are being built by Wheelock, they have a pond and open space, and they've asked Nova Parks. They asked Fairfax County. They asked Reston Association. We know what it costs to take care of ponds and lakes, dredging. It's expensive. And however many townhomes it is, anyway, it doesn't work. And it's not going to work for Reston National, I'm afraid. So the best thing to do is hang on, hang together, and at some point, perhaps, they will sell. I've been researching the other SSPAs. There are 10 out there. And I was looking to see how many houses are coming and what was the price of that buildable land that people bought. And I found one area where the price has gone down over the years. Yes, people really do overpay for land. And then, as time goes on, they sell it at a loss. One last thing. Who was the tipster to the Reston Patch reporter? The reporter will never say. He's a reporter. He's a good journalist. My first thought, and I still stick with it today, who had the motive? The same group that sent postcards to people in North Reston to come to their dog and pony show presented by Mark Looney over at Herndon Middle School? I suggest that maybe that's where you look for your tipster. There you'll find motive. Thank you.
I saw no further hands. But if there are any other folks going once, going twice. Mr. Petrine.
Bob Petrine, 2503 Foxcroft Way. I did not intend to speak this evening, nor am I going to repeat what others have said. I do want to caution everybody that in dealing with developers, there are issues that you have to be aware of. And I can think of comparable cases like at Campus Comptons over at the corner of Sunrise Valley and Wheelie, where they proffered $1.5 million for a pedestrian crossover Wheelie in order for people to get to the metro. The money is only going to come when the RUP for the final building is issued, which is never going to be built. So it's a specious profit. And I caution anyone that looks solely at whatever number is proposed as a bargaining chip in order to motivate people to come to a decision. I think there is plenty of support to keep the resolution that is already in place. I don't see there's any appetite. I don't believe there's any appetite for the Board to make a change, nor for the county to make a change to the recommendation that staff has already made to not consider the SSPA at 288 units. So this 850 units is just a number that somebody threw against the wall. So enough about that. The other issue that I'd like to speak to very quickly is I'd like to applaud the staff's effort on the PRC amendments that they've negotiated with county staff. I think they've done a marvelous job to get to the point that is a workable solution. Is it everything that everybody wants? No. Are you going to get that? No. Lastly, if RA gets in an adversarial role with the county, all you're asking for is litigation. And it's not the way that you should-- there should be a partnership. It needs to be a working relationship. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, everyone who spoke tonight. Again, I appreciate your engagement in the Governance Reston Association. Moving on to Item D.
Mr. President, before we leave that, we need to acknowledge that we've gotten over 200 emails on this subject from the membership. I've read all of them, and I'm sure the rest of the Board has also. And we thank everybody who contacted us regarding this issue.
We absolutely did. And those folks all received an email from both myself and from Mac, thanking them, just as you have. So I appreciate that. Thanks, John. Moving on to Item D on the agenda, the Consent Calendar.
Move to adopt the Consent Calendar.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Having been moved and seconded, are there any comments or discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. President, there was a motion that never came to final disposition as reflected in the minutes. And we probably need to put that on to New Business tonight. It related to the calendar. An amendment was adopted, but the calendar itself was never finally adopted. So maybe a little later tonight under New Business or someplace, we need to take final action on that calendar. And the minutes reflect that. And I want to thank Ms. Copeland for her studious and careful production of the minutes.
We will make sure that we squeeze that into Item J. Thank you very much. So we had a motion that was seconded, and there were comments. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's unanimous of all in attendance. Thank you very much. All right. Volunteer interviews. We have one. Mr. Peggy's? Is he on the line or in the room?
Mr. Peggy, you've been asked to unmute.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, I'm here.
You've got the opportunity to speak to us if you'd like to. If not, I open it to the Board for any questions.
Yeah, I'll say just a few words.
Thank you.
Most of them were in my application. Basically, it's a continuation for the chair position, which I have been for about the past year and a couple of months. And it was the first committee that I joined in Reston. I'm a Reston resident since 1969 with a couple of years off for college. My mother and father moved here then. So I'm very familiar. But one of the things that I've always enjoyed about Covenants Committee was getting to see places that I never knew was here because it is a big place. It has expanded. And when we go around to visit some of the properties to review them, it simply, you know, brings to light the large variety and the long time that many properties have been here. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Well, if I can take the initiative and ask you your first question. When you do those tours, I'd like to go with you once or twice. I'd like to see some of these places I've not been before.
Yes, the way that that works is that staff arranges it, and they're totally in charge of it. And the Covenants Committee meeting is typically on a Wednesday. I think it's the third Wednesday is that works out. And so the inspections are always on Monday mornings at about 9:00, when they depart. And depending upon the transportation or the number of people that may be going, you'll be able to go in their car or follow along. Typically, there's only one or two people on the committee that make the inspection tour. Staff takes photographs, makes sure that all the information is up to date. But you get a chance to see individual properties, but you get a chance to not only drive by some areas you may have never seen or actually visit them.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, you should basically talk to Cameron because he's the staff person that coordinates both DRB and Covenants.
Any opportunity to bother Cameron is great for me. So thank you very much. So Director Perry has a question.
I saw in your application that you're moving from At-Large to North Point as to offer the opportunity to more people. And I thought that was wonderful. So thank you. My question for you is, do you see any opportunities to improve the covenants or update them or make suggestions to them based on your experience with covenants?
Yes. One of the things that typically comes up is that somebody has made a complaint. And I will give them one that's becoming very common these days, and that's about erosions, water coming from an adjacent property or even RA property onto, you know, a townhouse's small area or a home's small area, and then doing some damage. The problems that we've had when we review these is that, well, where is the property line? And a lot of times, that really can't be determined. So is it really coming across the property line? Is water being diverted intentionally across the property line? That's another one that frequently comes up. And so no decision can be made because, well, where is the property line? It's not surveyed. It's not surveyed, it's not there anymore, or, you know, even a new home may not even have the, the stakes still in place. The other is, is that, well, is it truly eroding? And, you know, my background, 40-plus years in architecture, as a specifications writer where I would oversee, you know, all the civil work, all of the landscaping work and things of that nature, and coordinate their documents with ours, is that I can look at it, I know what erosion looks like, but I'm not a professional civil engineer, I'm a certified specifier. But it's not hard to see, but it's basically, can a complaint be made without it becoming a legal issue? And so a lot of times, if it's not totally obvious, there's a hesitancy to say, well, we need to have a professional with experience in erosion control, or to see, is it actually eroding, or is this just looking bad for other reasons? So that, that, that kind of issue. The same kind of thing happens every now and then with, with trees. Trees is a great example because it's actually correct in the, you know, in, in Virginia and Fairfax County law, and that is that if, if a tree is on one property, property A, and its limbs overhang onto property B, and the owner on property B does not like the tree at all, he may shear the limbs off literally at his property line. Not a pleasant thing to do, but that's legal. So that kind of thing, which is very clear, and that kind of example, is totally unclear in cases of erosion, water flow across property lines, et cetera. So that, we've, we've tried, I'm also a member on EAC, and we've tried on EAC to do a couple of revisions to things like stormwater, downspouts and whatnot, and, because some of the language in the, in the design documents basically state that it's, it's like, like saying, okay, all piping that's on the surface or downspout diversions need to be short. What does short mean? So we tried to, to do some of the modifications where we put a dimension in instead of just saying short, because short to some people may mean 20 feet, and short to some people may mean three feet. So it's that kind, that's the kind of thing that I think needs to be done in, in all of the design guidelines, documents, is, is a look at them, a review of them, to make sure that there is definitive of as possible as opposed to interpretive.
Thank you.
Does that answer the question? Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Not a question, just a comment and, and basically to say thank you for your service since 2019 and continuing service and volunteering here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes the question and answer portion of this conversation. I appreciate you taking the time and, again, resubmitting your application to us. We are going to discuss this in executive session, and you can either wait for that or we can get back to you tomorrow.
That will be fine tomorrow, sir.
Thanks very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right. So we are, we have decided to skip, we'll change column, section F, community, Committee of Resolutions, with an RTC North conversation, and I think Director?
PRC.
PRC, excuse me, conversation, I don't want to change the topic.
Guest.
Conversation, and we have a guest supervisor, no, Mr. Malin, excuse me.
Come on up.
Okay, okay.
I'm not taking his position as supervisor.
Thank you.
President Johnson, maybe just by way of introduction, we had asked Mr. Malin to come to give a presentation on the most recent white paper that was released some time ago. I think it might just be worthwhile to talk about process and kind of steps in the process as Mr. Malin then gives his presentation, gives some context for what's happening now and what happens, you know, going forward. And we're happy to answer any questions as well, too. So here on, for the staff, we have Ms. Siro in the back, who's our land use planner, who's done a lot of work, you know, with the county on this. We also have outside legal counsel, should there be any legal questions, that of course would be something that might come up in executive session. We've tried to provide you in your packet with information about the current existing PRC ordinance, the most recent draft, and then your adopted redline position, and of course, all three are slightly different, and then some analysis of how those things weave together. And of course, we've been talking to Mr. Malin about, you know, each of those things. Coming out of tonight, our understanding is that the county would like to request authorization to publish new draft language in June, and is really looking for some feedback from RA as an entity regarding the most recent draft, which I believe is their intent to publish. So the way we imagine tonight going, Mr. Malin would like to give a presentation, you know, and explain some of those things and some of the things that we, of course, have talked with them about, and then take Q and A and discussion with the board.
Great, thank you. Mr. Malin?
Again, thank you. Bill Malin with Fairfax County Department of Plan and Development. I'm joined here with Leslie Johnson, the zoning administrator, and Kathy Belgium, Belgium with Zoning Evaluation Division. So a quick recap, as you mentioned, we started this process, and in 2023, when the board re-adopted the zoning ordinance, Reston Association came to the board meeting and asked that they study PRC plan exceptions, particularly as related to community recreation. Last November, we released a white paper with some proposed texts. We met with our board supervisors and planning, commission, and land use committees. We did a couple outreach meetings to the general public, went with RA, we met with Burke Center, one of the other PRC districts in the county, and then we released additional texts in March, did some additional outreach meetings. And so today, we wanted to focus on sort of the PRC plan exceptions, well, one of the PRC plan is not required. And you can see, we kind of broken it down into the current provisions as proposed at its by staff. And the first two you see on here relate to single-family A-tatch and D-tatch units. We're not proposing any changes related to that, so this amendment for a single-family owner isn't going to be impacted. You're allowed to build a house, you're allowed to make additions if you don't require a PRC plan. Go to the next slide. The first changes we are making relate to what we call non-residential multifamily uses. These are the, all other uses besides single-family A-tatch and D-tatch. So what we're proposing here is, if you want to make a change, if you want to build an addition onto your multifamily or your non-residential building beyond what was specifically approved, there is a process to do that administratively. We're proposing that process be what's called minor modifications. That's how every other zoning district can make these minor changes. That requires an application that goes to Kathy, Kathy goes to the board member. If it's a building addition, there's notice to the public, to adjacent property owners. There are set criteria in the ordinance for how big it can be, and that's a similar process we have for PRC plan exceptions. You know, it's, what's the row of numbers here? So if you want to do a building addition, you, currently under a PRC plan, you could do the lesser of 10% up to 2,000 square feet. Through minor modifications, you can do the greater of 500 square feet up to 2,000 square feet, depending on the size of the building, for how big your addition can be. Our proposal is to move any building addition in that non-residential multifamily through the minor modification process. They get about the same in the end, but it is one process for all developments regardless of the zoning district. Go to the next slide. Often, you'll see, under parking, this is mostly keeping the text as is, all the strikeout gets moved into the next, number five. So under the PRC, if you want to add more parking to the site, you're allowed to do a 10% increase of the area that's related to the parking, loading, surface area. Beyond that requires a PRC plan. That's current requirement, that would be continued to be requirement here. The next slide, we'll call all other, excuse me, go, one more slide back, please, thank you. All other elements related to setbacks, heights, landscaping, buffering that are on that, again, related to the non-residential multifamily, that would be directed to the minor modification process. Again, you can, currently under a PRC plan, you may ask a question unofficially to the zoning administrator, that would be an official request, a letter written to Zoning Evaluation Division. Again, they would use the same process, they would look at any other development in the county regardless of the zoning district in terms of allowing that, potentially a 10% modification typically as relate to those type of encroachments, increase in height and buffering. And to go to the next slide. Skip ahead a little bit on to this. Last three of items relate to, if you're required to do a special exception, special permit, no PRC plan, a temporary use, it's only there for a year, no PRC plan, any type of system ability improvement, no PRC plan, none of that text is being proposed to change. We'll go to the next slide. And this is really the one that obviously you're most concerned about, these relates to, this is a new concept we introduced in March, which is community facilities and common open space, RA facilities, for example. And the, the text in red is stuff that is new from what was released in March. So we want to focus on that. So really what it talks about here is, if you have, if you're open space, you become an open space, and you want to build a new building or make an addition to an existing building, we're proposing to get a one-time new building, up to 2,500 square feet, we increased that from 2,000 from a staff recommendation from March, as well as an addition up to 2,500 square feet. Again, that was an increase from the March from 2,000 square feet. You could also make changes to setbacks, you can make changes to the buffering, the open space. Previously, we had limited the changes of the setback to 10%. We moved that more into more of a generic discussion, a little more flexibility than the hard 10%, so as long as it generally matched what was shown, it makes sense, there's more flexibility to do that administratively. And the last talks about the minor accessory structures. We added a few examples, this is mostly a reorganization, but example like picnic shelters was in there, and these, these structures are really more of the, they're not buildings per se, but they might be playground equipment or gazebos or picnic shelters are the examples that we had on there. And then, as mentioned earlier, our intent is to, you know, solicit comments today, we were at Burke earlier this week, we would, depend upon how today goes, regroup and decide to move forward, potentially looking for authorization from the board, our board of supervisors in June with public hearings, and July, August, September, depend upon where planning, commission, and board dates would fall. So happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, excuse me, sorry. I have a, more than a few questions. Bill, thanks for coming out tonight, and I appreciate all the hard work that you've put into this, and I wish I could say I was 100% satisfied, but you'd be disappointed if I did. I'm concerned about the interaction of this proposal with section 51, I want to make sure I get the right section. 81, 005, which is the minor modification provision?
Right.
Because I had been led to believe that somehow this would be the saving mechanism to avoid a PRC amendment without granting us all of the exemptions that we sought when we talked to the board of supervisors in May, I think of what, 2023? I'm concerned because it says, I wish I had it up, minor modifications may not be allowed if it expands the hours of operation. Most of our changes would expand hours of operation. They may not permit changes to mass bulk orientation or reduce yards by 10%. The problem with that, reducing yards by 10% is that most of our recreational sites were bubble plans with no setbacks at all. There were, there were subsequent site plans, but I wouldn't be, I don't think it would be accurate or fair to our membership to say, whatever the setback was on that site plan, you cannot reduce it by more than 10%, given that there are no yards on the plan that was approved. Almost all of the recreational facilities are on bubbles as opposed to hard setbacks. So I, I'm concerned about a provision that says you can't reduce a yard by more than 10% when there were no yards to begin with. But I'm, I'm very concerned about a provision that says, we can't give you a minor modification if you're expanding hours. And then I look down the other 11 or 12, 12 exclusions from the minor modification, and when you read them all, effectively, it doesn't do us, minor modifications don't do us any good. So, hang on, I'm not, I'm trying to make sure I had Supervisor Alcorn's attention because this is the first time I've had a chance to react to this in specifics. So I, I'm not comforted by the minor modification process, because when I look at all the things that are, and we have counsel on the line, she can look at it, too, when we, when we look at all of the things that are not allowed to be done by minor, I'm sorry. Did you two need to confer? I can, I can wait.
I was just trying to, I was going to answer your question.
When we look at all of the restrictions on minor modifications, it seems like minor modifications are an illusory tool to address some of the improvements to our facilities that we're, we want to, we were hoping for. We have multiple constituencies who have asked the board to make improvements. I have some graphics, and hopefully we can share them with the staff, but here's just one, we have two others that I can think of. The tennis community about 10 years ago asked us to take the Lake Newport tennis courts and enclose them.
John, can you move the mic closer to you, please?
Okay. All right. Tony, can you play Vanna White for me?
Absolutely.
You're a good guy. So the tennis community, and I may, and imagine today the pickleball community, would be interested in us enclosing the Lake Newport tennis courts, and we went so far as to spend an enormous amount of money, six, seven figures, to develop these architectural plans as well as the civil engineering plans. My question is, and I don't expect you to answer tonight, because I hope that, that staff can get copies of these plans to the county staff, is how do we do this? Does this require a PRC plan amendment? Because if that's right, it's dead. We're not going to spend a million dollars just to go through the process and risk get denial. Similarly, we have a plan to enclose at the request, at the request of the master swimmers. Lake Newport is our only Olympic distance pool, it's 50-meter pool. Master swimmers have asked us to enclose that pool, and we have drawings that shows that pool being enclosed with overhead doors so you can open it back up in the summer and pop the roof and that kind of thing. And we spent a lot of money doing the architectural work to show that. Again, if we would have to go through a PRC plan amendment, that project's dead. But now we can get down to something really small. We have developed, and I think we have the support of Little League, to develop an indoor pitching and baseball tunnel, and it would be located between Brown's Chapel and Field One, and it's about, I think I worked it out, it's about 3,700 square feet. Yeah, it's about 3,700 square feet.
Director Farrell, if we could bring this home so he can start to answer questions, that'd be great.
I, I'm, it is one question.
I, I understand that, and that's why I'm asking, maybe we can break it up a little bit.
And so, it, well, and those are three examples of, that would truth, ground truth this language. So that's question one, then, and, and I don't expect you to answer it tonight, because you need to look at the plans, and we need to get them to you, all of, all three of those plans. But then I look at the list of exemptions, and I look at the list of exemptions that the board and the association proposed, and one of them was slides, and it's not included in the staff proposal, the county staff proposal. Another one was heating pools and splash pads, talked about batting cages and pitching tunnels and bullpens and year-round enclosures. And I- And I don't see anything along those lines in the exemptions that the county staff is proposing, except county staff has a proposal which would say that you could have temporary structures that weren't year-round. And the thought crossed my mind, and I thought that was making progress because there is among the swimming community here in Reston, a desire for us to put up seasonal bubbles over the pools that were heated. We have two, three, Shadowwood Ridge Heights and one other one, somebody can tell me. And I think our community would like to see us put bubbles over those pools during the winter months. And it strikes me that I don't see such a structure. I believe it would be covered by that exemption of temporary structure, but I'm given to understand some folks have said, no, it's not. So I, I think before we can figure out whether or not this is adequate, it would be useful for us to have those concerns addressed. And again, don't expect it tonight, but I would like to get some feedback on those before this goes to the board for authorization. Because as we all know, and we've heard several times, once the text amendment goes to the board for authorization, making amendments at the planning commission or at the board is very, very difficult and frequently results in the text amendment having to be re-advertised. And so there's a real resistance to make changes once a text amendment is authorized. If you have anything to give us back on any of these tonight, I'm more than happy to listen, but I just, we're not there yet.
We'll start from the beginning. You're reading the amendment incorrectly. So you don't jump to minor modifications, you start with PRC plan exceptions being in a PRC district. You start with community recreation. So the first thing you look at, am I exempt from a PRC plan based upon the new language with the PRC plan exceptions under number six? If you exempt there, you don't jump to minor modifications. It's a two-part thing. You can go, you can start with PRC plan exceptions. If you meet that test, you don't then go also have to meet the minor modification test. If you don't meet the PRC plan exception test, you have an opportunity to also be exempt from the PRC plan through minor modification, a minor variation, which are both administrative, well, minor modification is administrative, minor variation is administrative with, in front of the board of supervisors. So those opportunities are still there. I will say, the language you have here today is far more lenient than the current provisions in the ordinance to make changes to open space and PRC. So if these additions are under the 2,000 square foot for a new building, you don't look at the PRC, you don't look at the minor modification provisions, and those, those restrictions don't kick in. So that's the first part you start with is, am I exempt as a PRC district under a PRC plan exceptions? If you are, it's not required. Then you don't jump to minor modifications. Minor modifications are kicking in in PRC specifically for a non-residential, multifamily, or something that can't meet a PRC plan exception.
The plan exceptions list make reference to 801, 8105 in several locations.
Gives that opportunity to also use 8100.5 in addition. So we don't take anything away that you may have in a non-PRC district. So a PRC plan exception is PRC specific, you get exceptions for the process. You also have the ability to ask for a minor modification or a minor variation. So it's not an additional requirement, it's not additional restriction. You start with the PRC plan part first. If you don't meet that test of meeting the exception, then you have an opportunity to go through a minor modification, a minor variation. If you go through those criteria, then those requirements would come into play.
Using these examples, however, I don't see these examples meeting that number because the square footage is greater, and it appears that minor modification, because we would be extending the hours of operation, that's why you'd do something like this.
Well, number one.
Minor modification would not be available.
Number one, the minor modification wouldn't be available because of the square footage. So we, you know, so the PRC plan exception starts with, in the new text, up to 2,500 square foot new building. If these are bigger than that, you, you can't do it without a PRC plan. Minor modification isn't going to be more lenient on that. I mean, the restrictions is 2,500 square feet, right? So minor modification doesn't give you more. If you're going to put a building, if this is 3,700 square feet or larger, it is a PRC plan. That doesn't change, that's what that requirement is today. If this amendment doesn't happen, that is still a requirement. But this gets you today as a 2,500 square foot addition without a PRC plan, which today would require a PRC plan. This amendment gives you that as opposed to not.
So as the staff is proposing all of these.
Director, excuse me, Director Farrell, to interject one more time around, and then.
I just wanted to finish the question.
Please.
So any of these proposals would require a PRC plan amendment, a rezoning effectively?
A PRC plan is not a rezoning, number one. PRC plan amendment is an approval process by the board of supervisors. It is a public hearing, it is not a rezoning. So it would be a PRC plan, the proposal must be in accordance with development plan. So as long as you, development plan is recreation, it is a PRC plan. It is a public hearing process, it is a legislative process, it's not a rezoning.
It's a legislative process, which is the same as a rezoning.
That is incomplete, that is not correct. A rezoning is a completely different process where a PRC plan is not, a PRC plan does go to the board of supervisors, but is not a rezoning application. You're already zoning PRC, you're not zoning yourself, you're not adding profits to the site.
Thank you, Mr. Mailin. Director Farrell?
I have one question for staff, and then one question for our speaker. For example, on the Lake Newport tennis court enclosure lovely picture that John and Mr. Champ held up, do we know what the size of that building would be?
I, I don't know the size, but I know it's bigger than either the current PRC ordinance would allow or the proposed language, meaning in any scenario, our understanding now or in the future would require a PRC plan or amendment.
Is it in the corner there, is it?
Yeah.
On the, on the other picture.
In the other picture, it has the square footage for existing court in the new building area, yes.
And can you tell, can you read it from there?
Uh, yeah.
It increases 10,000 square feet.
Yeah. It increases by 10,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you. That helps me understand, I appreciate that. And, and then my other question is kind of two-part for you. In the fee schedule, there's language here that says a minor variation to proffered conditions submitted by homeowners association is half of the application fee, but then in parentheses, it gives additional options. Can, what is the actual answer there? Are we actually looking at 305, or are we looking at one eighth of 610, or what is that actual?
The staff recommendation would be half the cost. We give the board options if they want to choose a different percentage.
Thank you. And on a PR, so, PRC, is that what I'm looking? On the PRC amendment application, it does that, and I understand that I have other board members that would love to answer, but I would like to hear from you all, is, what is the fee for that, or does it vary depending on your application?
PRC plan, if it's the first PRC plan, I believe is around, I'll check, 19,000, something, you'll get to answer. If it's amendment, it's half. So, yeah, we'll double check the number, but it's around $19,000 for a PRC plan application.
For the application, okay. And I understand that there's additional paperwork and surveys and all that kind of stuff. I just wanted a definitive idea. Thank you.
Were there other questions? Director Dushak?
By way of example, if the RA board asked to put a splash pad or add a splash pad, can you explain what, what that would look like as far as a process?
So adding a splash pad, you would like to have a letter written to zoning administration division, provide that information of what you're talking about, where you're talking about, so we understand that. It may fall under one of the abilities for PRC plan exception, but depends upon some of the specifics in splash pad particularly. Are we looking at something that's in an existing pool area and it's part of that pool, or is it somewhere a brand-new structure, a brand-new facility? So that may depend on the answer as well as specifics about the history of the site.
Okay, thank you. And my question from Mac related to this topic is, we just did a splash pad at Shadowwood Pool, and it's my understanding that we reconfigured the pool, we moved the enclosure, we added the splash pad outside the footprint of the, the pool area at the time, and we, you know, then happily opened up our pool for our residents. Did RA seek an interpretive zoning or an administrative approval when we redid Shadowwood
This all predates me, as well as Mr. Lusk. So I don't believe a formal request was made, but I do believe there were some phone calls that were made between the previous chief operating officer, you know, and the county staff to expedite that process. That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. And then, can you help us understand the 8100.5? Why did we need, like, what led you to lead that to, or add that to this when the PRC hasn't had it in the past?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
What, what led you to add the language to speak to the minor modifications process, the 8100.5 language?
Well, it is in the PRC currently. If you read down the list on PRC plan exceptions, it talks about it today. Specifically, where we added in there that if you're a non-residential multifamily development, if you want to make a change to your approvals, you use minor modification provisions to do so. That would be the same process as PDC district over here would use, or PRM district would use in the county to determine that they could have a minor change to what was approved. Could be a minor building addition, or changes in setbacks, changes in building height, that would, that would be the process today. As I've already said, if you're PRC, that could be the process today, too. You may have a situation where you're zone PRC and you don't meet the PRC plan exceptions, but you would meet the minor modification provisions or the minor variation provisions, and you still have that opportunity to, you know, either one of those administrative processes without a PRC plan. That's the today's ordinance, that would continue to be the ordinance. The change we're proposing is specifically, non-residential multifamily builders, developers use the same process for any change as anyone else in the county would do.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mac, my, the comparative analysis that was in the packet tonight, the one that has the, the chart, this one, I don't, I'm not sure who, who created it, but the, was it run by our, our land use council before it was put in our packet?
Both outside land use council and Mr. Champ reviewed that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I hear none. Thank you very much for your presentation.
I could add on to the questions earlier. Slides, slides would typically fall under playground equipment, would, doesn't have to be listed out, every type of playground equipment would have to be listed to be exempt from a PRC plan. Bubbles, if it's up for more than one year, it's not temporary. Temporary is one-year type thing. So if it's the same bubble up year after year after year, that is not temporary. It may be exempt based upon the square footage, if it's just under 2,000 square feet. If not, it would require a PRC plan.
Actually, I wanted to ask a question about that. Thank you. So you mentioned the bubble, if it's put up year after year after year versus per, seasonally. So let's say we have it up nine months out of the year, three months out of the year, the pool's open air. Would we need to do a PRC amendment every year then to put the bubble back up?
So when you do a PRC plan, it's a one-time thing.
Right.
So you, so if you're doing a temporary structure, it's allowed to be for one year. You wouldn't want to see any other organization or any other group say, my structure's temporarily, but it's up 11 months out of the year and it's gone one month. We wouldn't do that.
Certainly.
So if it's something, you'd give it, you could do a one-time thing. If it's more than one year, you'd have to get a permit when the fire department came in and did the temporary fire department for, I think it was two to three years. They had to do a PRC plan to have that structure up for that shorter period of time because it exceeded one year.
Right.
Have the same requirement if a bubble or some other temporary structure that'd be year to year to year over the 2,500 square feet would trigger a PRC plan.
So I, I, that almost answers my question, I think. I'm looking specifically here for seasonal. You know, like, if we want to make the pool open air during the summer, covered in the winter and fall, what are we looking at there?
Again, I would say if it's over the, the 2,500 square feet as proposed, it'd be a PRC plan.
Okay.
Current ordinance, 100% is a PRC plan, I would say.
Okay.
This gives more exceptions in terms of adding buildings than the current ordinance does.
I hear you, thank you.
Hold up.
Please.
So that would be true even if you're in a situation where the bubble comes up, sorry?
That would be true even in a situation that the bubble is only up like three months a year, and then it comes down. So it's only up October through January or February, and it was taken down every year and then put back up, you're saying, it would be your position that we'd require a PRC plan amendment?
As long as it's over.
Well, the ordinance, you know, permitted on a temporary basis for a period not to exceed one year. You want a structure to be up multiple years.
Less than a year multiple times.
I would, I don't believe the ordinance gives you that flexibility today, and that's not part of the proposal.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. All right. Just about 8 o'clock. I would like us to take a bit of a break, maybe perhaps 10 minutes if the board is good with that.
Can we thank Ms. Johnson and Mr. Mailin and, excuse me, I know your name, Ms. Belgium, for coming out tonight?
Yes.
And Supervisor Alcorn for hanging in there.
Thanks, everybody. Let's take a 10-minute recess, a 14-minute recess, and we'll see, see you back at 8:10.
Is he thinking for the light?
Okay.
So are we back? Okay. We're back from break. Thanks, everyone, for bearing with us. The next item to supersede the CEO update section, we're going to discuss Reston National. And Director Farrell is going to take first step at that time. Please.
Mr. President, I have some prepared comments. I hope they won't be too boring. Some of my dearest friends say that golf is an elitist activity that RA should not try to preserve. Having just attended the Masters, I understand that perspective. However, preservation of Reston National Golf Course, 168 acres, a public golf course without cost to the association or its members, is worth millions in the annual assessment. Development of residential buildings between the existing 400-plus homes that back on to Reston National and their view of the course would, by some estimates, cause a collective $40 million in lost assessed value for those homes. Reston National Golf Course is a recreational amenity for those members who use the trails that wind through the property to say nothing of the many members who played at that 6,800-yard, 71-par, par-71, 18-hole championship course. It's also an extensive visual amenity that is a significant part of the lived experience of those of us who live in South Reston whose homes are near but not on the course. The EAC's memo on the positive environmental aspects of Reston National Golf Course is informative and dispositive of the question of environmental concerns. I've been clear that I view the Reston National Golf Course and Hidden Creek as an essential element of Reston's open space that should not be redeveloped. However, Mr. President, I look at the last resolution that we adopted on this matter. And I draw your attention to, it's up on the screen, now therefore. And I would suggest to you that I have heard some folks who were in favor of the Reston National Golf Course redevelopment suggest that redevelopment of Reston National could be considered consistent with that resolution. It's not consistent with the intention of the resolution. But if you were to take Reston National Golf Course and make it an executive par-three course, it would be consistent with that resolution. If you were to take Reston National Golf Course and turn it into a miniature golf course, it would be consistent with that resolution. The association's current resolution on Reston National Golf Course is vague and does not meet the moment. A new resolution more specific to the current threat to Reston National Golf Course and the PRC ordinance needs to be developed. And I hope the board would task the Land Use Advisory Committee with the development of that resolution so that they could return to regular order. Such a resolution would carefully be developed in order to provide a rejection, outright rejection, of Mr. Looney's unsolicited, and that's important, unsolicited, $8 million offer before the Planning Commission considers his site-specific amendment on May 15. Unfortunately, we don't have time to get that done, so I'm going to make a motion here. An effective advocate would never appear before a tribunal without carefully reading and understanding her opponent's brief and would never address the tribunal without carefully listening to the proponent's arguments. But unfortunately, we didn't get a chance to do that. County staff has already recommended against further consideration of Mr. Looney's SSPA. Supervisor Alcorn has frequently made his opposition to the redevelopment of Reston National Golf Course clear. But months ago, Mr. Looney repeatedly said that if his SSPA didn't go forward, his client would use a 1966 zoning case to pursue a PRC amendment. And if that effort was unsuccessful, he would then sue to overturn the legislative nature of PRC amendments and develop Reston National Golf Course by right. It's been weeks since Mr. Looney made known his intentions to wreck the PRC ordinance. And we need a copy of the 1966 rezoning file as soon as possible. I have two questions. For Dwight Sharnes fellow speculators, instead of paying Reston Association $8 million, why not use that money to write off the loss from their misguided gamble and sell Reston National to an entity that wants to operate it as a golf course instead of threatening the PRC ordinance that is at the very heart of our community? Such buyers have been already identified. Why won't you sell? For my friends opposing the development of Reston National Golf Course, isn't it time to start picketing the NVR headquarters, that's right here at Plaza America, telling them that it's time to sell Reston National Golf Course to a golf course operator? Mr. President, I'm going to move that we instruct the staff, you and/or the staff, whoever's going to testify next week, to make clear that we support the staff recommendation that no further time be spent in consideration of that SSPA. And I need a second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion topics? Director Justk.
I move to defer the motion until after executive session.
So that would require a second.
We're in an active motion.
Yeah, we're in an active motion, so I don't know that we can do it that way. We'd have to do a unanimous consent.
We can have a motion to defer. I won't support the motion.
Okay. Okay, so can I get a second for?
Second.
Okay, we now have another motion on the floor to defer the previous motion.
May I inquire as to why?
Please.
I would like to consult with counsel in executive session about the board's responsibilities.
You consult Mr. Champ.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Mac or Tony, the 1966 case, have you guys started to research it or give it to somebody on the team to get that information?
Yeah, the question is not germane to the motion on the table.
Motion is to defer.
We're still talking to defer.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Apologies. Can we take a vote?
Just checking to see if there are any further comments directed to that particular motion. Okay, all in favor? One, two, three. Against? One, two, three. And abstaining? Okay, 3-3-1, motion fails.
3-3-1, motion fails.
Okay, so back to the original motion. All in favor?
I want to speak to the motion, please.
I'm sorry?
Will you?
I would like to speak to the motion, please.
I'll tell you, please.
I'm going to abstain on the motion, and I want to make it clear that it has nothing to do with my stance, and I believe what the rest of the board's stance probably is on the golf course. I do believe that we have some responsibilities as a board to follow this case for the benefit of the association, and I also believe that it is related to our responsibilities as a board. I would like to ask counsel, but I won't get that opportunity, what those responsibilities are as board members. And I think that's unfortunate. But I'll be abstaining on the motion because I do not feel comfortable as a board member that I have enough information to be able to properly decide how to vote on this motion. Thank you.
Director Santan.
I guess I'll speak for you, then. What is our responsibility? Can you answer Jennifer's question?
Speaking generally, this board has a...
Tony, can you move it closer, please?
See, without you, where would I be? Speaking generally, this board has a duty to act under the good faith business judgment rule. That means basically availing yourself of enough information to make an informed decision that is in the best interest of the association. Additionally to that, there are various fiduciary duties that all of you will remember from my thrilling onboarding class. Duty to care, duty to act, duty of loyalty. Duty of care is to reasonably prudent in your decisions. You can't put your head in the sand. You have to avail yourself of relevant information, get your questions asked from staff. Duty to act also deals with not putting your head in the sand. If you were, for instance, you see that the lake house was on fire, you could not say, "Well, that's terrible," and then go to bed. You'd have to let somebody know. Or if, I don't know, a accountant named Schmoni Schmapp you reasonably believed was embezzling funds, you'd have a duty to talk to someone. You have a duty to safeguard the assets and the finances of the association. Any other questions about that? Have I covered everything?
Thank you. Can you repeat, the maker of the motion, repeat his motion again?
John, can you repeat it, please?
Sure. The motion was, and this is not going to be my only motion, the motion was to direct the president to convey to the Planning Commission our support of the county staff's position that no further consideration be given to the SSPA for the Reston National Golf Course submitted by Mark Looney.
Okay, and that motion has been made and seconded. There have been comments. There is one more comment. This is just a note. This is going to be your last comment on this particular motion.
So now I will be voting no on the motion because I have heard even Director Farrell ask the staff or let the staff know that we need information related to this case. And we do not have that information. And so I believe it is in my duty as a director to not make a decision like this until we have that information. And I would ask that the rest of the board support that. Thanks.
Any further comments? All right, all in favor? One, two, three, four. That's four. Four against? One, two, and then abstaining. So 4-2-1.
Motion passes.
Motion does pass.
So the reason I made this motion tonight was that there was a public hearing or work session or some kind of... I'm going to make another motion.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, yes.
Did you recognize him?
I did not.
I beg your pardon.
Yes. Can I have a floor, please? Thank you.
I have a following motion, which is for the board to direct the Land Use Advisory Committee to deliberate on this and come with a more complete resolution than the one we're seeing in front of us so that it makes clear to all near and far that we are against any redevelopment of the Reston National Golf Course or against any attempts to invalidate the PRC ordinance. This ordinance, this resolution, is weak. As I've pointed out, you could easily change that golf course to an executive three, par-three course and still claim to be consistent with this resolution. It doesn't go far enough. It needs to go further. We need to let the Land Use Advisory Committee do their work and come back to us with a more specific resolution because we're going to need it when the PRC amendment that Mr. Looney tells us he's going to file gets filed. And so I would ask the board to instruct the Land Use Advisory Committee to examine the proposals to redevelop Reston National Golf Course.
I'm going to inject. Can we make, when you actually make your motion, can it be more specific? So have the board give the Land Use Committee some more detail than where I think is outlined currently? And then, secondly, if we could put a date on that.
What did you have in mind for a date, Mr. President?
I don't think there's a rush to change this resolution. However, I would like to do it with some alacrity. So I would say, you know, 30 to 60 days.
Well, we only have one meeting in the next 30 days. I agree with you.
It's 60 days?
If... We would probably have to have multiple meetings to prepare a resolution after we get as much information as available. And I am specifically making this motion to override the motion that was previously made to tell LUAC not to do anything further. Because lots of people felt like they couldn't do anything. And I want to tell that committee, get to work and come back with a resolution on these proposals. There's two proposals, as most of us know. So, you know, if you want to say 90 days, sir, then return to the board at its meeting in July. I wouldn't oppose that. But it is likely that we'll come back, that committee will come back, of which I'm a member, will come back and say, hey, we need more time. But I'm happy to set a 90-day term.
Point of order. Did anyone second the motion? Because now we're discussing it.
We hadn't actually made the motion.
But did someone second the motion?
No.
There wasn't a motion on the floor.
There was no motion. He was discussing.
We were discussing, I was asking him to...
I heard you make a motion.
You did.
Did you? I did not hear that as a motion. I heard that as, "I'm going to make a motion."
Okay, I can, for clarity's sake, I can make the motion if you'd like. I move that the board direct the Land Use Advisory Committee to take up the applications made by the owners of the Reston National Golf Course and develop a resolution that is specific to those applications for consideration by the board.
That motion is on the floor?
But within, what did you want, 90 days? Within 90 days.
That motion is on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Director Mopar, you want to discuss?
Yes, actually, it works fine. The 90 days, based on what we know and the meetings happening with the county, is there something that we need to get done sooner than 90 days in order to use that as a way of countering anything that might be happening with the county meetings, et cetera? That's the timing. I'm looking at the timing.
If I may respond?
Please.
So that's why my first motion was to direct the president to say, "We support the staff recommendation." The second motion is, "We need a better resolution."
I understand.
So I don't, I'm not aware of any time constraint or any hearings on either of those applications that would require action quicker than 90 days. If that came back to us, I'd ask unanimous consent to move it up, make it faster. But I'm not aware of anything that would require action by this board before the 90 days.
Director Perry.
While I appreciate the motion and the thought behind the motion, I'm concerned that we're, appear to only be concerned with one golf course when Reston clearly has two golf courses. And while the one is currently on the chopping block currently, we know that the other one will come on the chopping block soon after, because it always does. And so, you know, for me to support anything of this nature, it would need to include both of our golf courses in Reston, which has always been the premise behind this board's suggestion that we are a golf course community and we want to keep the two golf courses that are in the master plan.
Thank you. Director Foul, would you like to respond to that?
Sure. I fully anticipate that if a Hidden Creek application came in, that it would be handled in the normal course under our Land Use Advisory Committee, which means we would get the information, we'd take public input, we would examine the application, offer the applicant an opportunity to be heard. That's what it says in our resolution about how we handle these kind of things. And so I would anticipate the normal process to go forward with regard to any application on Hidden Creek. The reason I make the motion tonight is because we had this other motion six weeks ago when I wasn't here that basically shut down the activity. We need a better resolution as regards to Reston National. That's the current threat. And so that's why I believe we need to move forward with Reston National. If and when Hidden Creek ever files anything, I'll be right back here with the mo... Well, no, I won't, because we'll have the regular order, which means we'll refer to the Land Use Committee and they'll come forward to the board with a resolution relative to that application, as we will with regard to any other application, like the other six or seven SSPAs. So that's regular order.
Director Santan.
I move to amend the motion to include both golf courses.
Is there a second?
Second.
We... It's not germane. The amendment is not germane.
I'm sorry, go to the parliamentarian on this one. Can you give me some advice here?
My motion was to send the matter back to the Land Use Advisory Committee to develop a resolution as to Reston National Golf Course. And an amendment for another is not germane because there's no pending applications. And the regular process would be, take that application and send it to the Land Use Committee. That was the regular process. This motion is to override the motion from a couple of weeks ago.
I think the parliamentarian's position is that it's not germane, so we are not going to accept that. Director Foul.
I'm just curious. When this resolution was set in place, the intent was it was for our golf courses. And we're saying now, we're going to replace this resolution with a resolution that only addresses Reston National Golf Course because Hidden Creek isn't on the chopping block today.
That's not the motion.
I'm sorry, just to interject here. I think what the mechanism here could be is to accept this, vote it down, and then submit another motion that covers your position, Margaret.
Agenda, point of order, the agenda topic is Reston National Golf Course, and I agree with Margaret. We need to find a way around that, but that's... I would request that you ask the parliamentarian if we could take Hidden Creek up tonight.
I really don't want to broaden this without additional information tonight.
And the object of this motion is merely to reverse the prior decision of this board with regard to the pending application. This board told Land Use, "Don't do anything." And what I'm trying to get to now is to tell Land Use, "Get to work." That's all this is. It's not an exclusion of Reston National. It's not meant to, and it's not to supersede this ordinance, I mean, this resolution. It's to come up with one that's more specific as to Reston National. So I'd ask the board to support the motion.
I think we've had sufficient discussion. No?
No.
No, we haven't. Okay.
Sorry, and this is my second time, so I get a turn.
You get one more.
Tony, we are talking about a motion that was in regards to suspending the rules as it relates to Reston National, correct? This motion is to reinstate what was suspended, correct?
My recollection is that the motion that was made was to suspend the Land Use Committee taking up that meeting with the developer.
Land Use Resolution 1 was specifically in that motion.
Okay. That's what my recollection of it was, was basically the board was suspending that resolution so that the procedures that followed development and the developer going to the Land Use Committee would be suspended and basically the developer was told, "We don't want you talking to our Land Use Committee." That's what I remember.
So it would take 2/3 to override?
2/3 to override?
The suspension.
The suspension.
Yeah, because they didn't advertise this motion.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
So this particular vote would require 2/3 in order to be successful?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
What's that number?
2/3 is 7.
What's that number?
Five.
How many do we have here?
Four.
Seven.
Seven, six.
Six.
Where is this? No, 2/3 is present.
Oh, 2/3 is present.
It's five. There are only seven of us.
Yes, so five.
I just want to make sure we all had the math, we understood, or are voting for, so...
If you're relying on a lawyer to do the math, we're really in trouble.
2/3 would be five. Yes.
You know, let's just do it.
We can't split it up any further. So, okay. We've got motion, second, further comments? Director Justk.
I have some questions of our CEO. Has staff studied the 1966 case that Mr. Looney has been referencing in public meetings?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's not germane to the motion on the floor.
I think that it is because it's related to whether the Land Use Committee can actually do its job if we send it back to them.
That's a stretch, but okay. I'll let it go.
I asked Sarah Mariska to have someone from her office go find that case today. So no, we have not studied it yet.
Have we done any analysis regarding the effects of member property values in any type of housing plan that the golf course owner wishes to move forward with?
I'm sorry, again, can you explain how that is directly germane to whether or not the Land Use Committee continues its work?
Sure. I don't believe that it's possible for the Land Use Committee at this point, as much as I would like them to, to write a resolution that can speak to this matter, because as an association, we don't have the research that the Land Use Committee needs to properly write it. So I want to make it clear before we send it to the Land Use Committee and give them this 90 days that I'm not sure it's possible for us to do in 90 days because I don't believe that staff have the information to help them know the effects and therefore write the Land Use resolution.
Thanks for answering.
Responding to the question, if that were to be the case, the Land Use Committee would come back to us and say, "We need more information. We need more time." And committees have done that to this board on a regular basis.
I don't disagree. I'm trying to set the expectations of the board of a lot of the questions that will be asked from the Land Use Committee to staff. So we need to understand, obviously, when we're sending something to a committee, what we're asking from staff to support that. And in this case, I think it's a lot. And it could potentially cost the association money to do this research. It could potentially need a lawyer to advise the Land Use Committee on some of the things that they need answers to. And it could take them... And it could take them longer because it's a 1966 case that no one that I know in Reston have found, and I've asked several people that are in the land use committee if they have it. So I, I just want to make it clear that we understand when we're voting what, what the scope is, because we just told this committee a few months ago, hands off this case, and now we're kind of giving them a gigantic task that doesn't have the research to support it.
Thank you.
Britt, can I ask something of the secretary?
Please.
Can you read the motion one more time before we go to vote, whatever you have ready?
I don't have the entirety of the motion that John made right now.
Do you want to reinstated one last time?
I'll try it one more time. And it, I'm sure it'll be different from the prior two times I stated it. Just to refer the matter to the land use committee and direct them to develop a resolution that is responsive to the two pending applications regarding Reston National Golf Course and report back to the board within 90 days. That's fair. Brittany?
Thank you.
So is the assignment to write the resolution or just a report? Because I think you, I think you put a new, I think that you are asking for a new resolution and that, in that version you said report, I just want to be clear.
Well, I would anticipate that a report would include a new resolution, but it may be that they come back and go, no, this is fine. I, I'm not trying to force an outcome, I just want them to come back to us. And I want to restore regular order. That's the motion, that's the purpose of this motion is to restore regular order.
So land use resolution one is back on the table for all cases?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that ends conversation. All in favor? It's two in favor, against? Four against, and abstain. That's one. The motion fails. You said you had another motion?
Nope.
Okay.
May I make a motion?
Please.
I motion to, Tony helped me here with verbiage, I motion to reinstate resolution one.
Land use resolution?
Land resolution one.
Well, as regards to what?
As regards to.
All operations.
All operations.
Well, the prior motion was specific to Reston National.
To Reston National.
Repeat that again? To reinstate?
I'm making a motion to reinstate land resolution one as it relates.
Operations.
To operations.
For Reston National.
For Reston National.
Is there a second to that?
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
The motion's redundant of the motion that was just voted down.
Okay, then I'm going to make another motion. I motion to refer the, to refer to the land use committee, the golf course resolution to amend it for both of its golf courses. And you can finesse the language later.
Well, that was the one we determined wasn't germane because we weren't talking about Hidden Creek. I think what we'd like to do is move to, move this conversation to another meeting in which we can discuss both Reston National and Hidden Creek, if that's the, if that's our goal, is to broaden this conversation.
Can we get another reading from Tony?
Her motion.
Her motion's redundant of the prior motion.
Only to the extent that it.
She split the baby.
Only to the extent that it is, involves Reston National. A certain, she certainly could bring a motion to reinstate land, all operations for land use advisory committee going forward. And that would be sufficiently different, I believe, to allow forward to.
But would, it wouldn't reverse the motion on Reston National?
It wouldn't reverse the, but it would put land use committee back into operation.
Land use committee was only restricted as to Reston National by the prior motion of the board. We were free to, to consider any other application.
So it's moot.
It's all about, yeah, it's all about Reston National, folks. And I'm trying, I tried to reverse the motion on Reston National, but apparently, we don't want to hear from our land use committee on Reston National. And that's the, and that's the motion that's pending. Now, somebody might want to move for reconsideration, but that would have to be made by the prior, by the prevailing side. Otherwise, we're not doing anything on Reston National as, as a board and as an association, which would be a real shame.
Well, we should put this for new business, for our next item. Frankly, if we're going to have somebody do the work, and the work can simply be no redevelopment on golf courses, one sentence, then that's what, we should tackle this holistically because I don't see why we would parse this off, and I agree with Margaret. So, I mean, that's my position. So I'm going to put it on the agenda.
So there is no motion currently active?
Correct.
You would draw your motion.
I mean, it didn't even get a second, so I don't have to withdraw.
Okay. Is there anything else on this topic? All right. We're moving on to the CEO update. Mac?
Thank you, President Johnson. Mostly administrative items tonight. One of the things that I want to just highlight and mention for everybody, though we've had tremendous excitement about the recreation passes being included in the base membership, we all need to continue to remind everyone that they actually have to renew their passes. So, and that's a fairly simple process, but as we're opening our pools at the end of this week, we anticipate there, of course, will be some people that will show up. We're prepared for that situation, but we do need everyone to remind all of your friends and neighbors and put the word out. So we've got that, and then there's a couple of other administrative items, but I'm happy to take questions if there are any.
Maybe a question? If I may. Are we doing any public outreach to, to remind the community to, you know, is Cara and the team putting together public outreach materials to help that?
Yeah, so we're, we're doing a couple of things. Last year, we had tremendous success at the Lake Anne market. So we're there every Saturday, talking to people, getting new people signed up and reminding them, and then we're doing the RA news blast. And then anytime we're out and about, which can include work with clusters or some covenants, outreach kinds of things, reminding people.
Director Perry?
I certainly appreciate all of that, and I know that our communications team does a great job. I just really, really, really want to encourage all of us, when we share that information, to point out that renters have to prove they live in Reston every year. And so it is a little bit of a hoop that has to be jumped through, and I want to make sure we're clear on that because I don't think that's always clear for our renters because we don't state it, ever. Just renters must prove that you live in Reston every year.
You're talking about when you get your pass?
Every year. To do anything with Reston, you must prove you live in Reston every year. Trust me, I know.
Oh, I rented for 10 years. I know.
So I just, I, you know, I just want to make sure that we're sharing all the information for everyone.
Director Sant.
That, get the benefit.
Director Sant.
This could either go to Mac or Peter, but can you give us a readout of your meeting with the county regarding storm water management proposals in Barton Hill?
Happy to. So for the uninitiated, there is a proposal by the county to undertake a storm water management project at Barton Hill, sort of at the end of Barton Hill Road, down in a sort of a gully area there. And if, if I could have a few minutes, I might share something on the screen if that's okay. So just give me a few minutes. What we've done over the last few weeks is meet with multiple county staff regarding the project. So there's a project manager who's sort of running this, this project. We've met with her on site, and we've elevated now some concerns to different levels of staff within the county. So this afternoon, some of my team and I met with some county staff to talk about this project, and then another project separate from this, which is a stream restoration sort of to the right of this, of this picture. And what the county is trying to do is tie the two projects together. What we, what we know that we didn't know before is that this is at least two years, probably three years away from coming to fruition. So we are not in any immediate need of being afraid or scared of what's going on back there. The project that they're trying, trying to tie together with this project is not yet approved in the county CIP. So in July of '25, that project will be in front of the Board of Supervisors for approval. So we, we are a long ways away from this work taking place. The county is trying to check off some state requirements. They're also trying to manage the sediments that get into the pond. So if I zoom in on this here, part of the goal here is to have a sediment for bay, which is sort of this area here, and these big sort of dark looking things that you see here, to prevent sediment from getting into the pond, which is at the ultimate end of the drawing here. So one other item that we pushed them for was, does the project meet the minimum requirements of the state? And they sort of went back and forth and said, you know, there's some things that they're doing that maybe are above the minimum requirements. So we pushed them that when they do come back, we'd like to see the minimum requirements instead of maybe some of the other items that they're talking about. So a couple of really great things were achieved in this conversation. The first being, we've established a relationship at a higher level. They know who we are, we know who they are. They're happy to talk with us about this at any time, they said. They're happy to have an additional conversation as well about the stream restoration. But what we know is that they're at least two years, probably three, away from anything actually taking place on the site.
Can I ask a follow up?
Please.
The adjacent project, is that in Harper Square? What, and what is the, what are, what are the conditions that they're trying to fix down there?
So it's a, it's a stream restoration, sorry, I need to look at my notes, I apologize for not memorizing this, but.
Shame on you.
It's a stream restoration of the Snake Den branch tributary at Sunrise Valley. So it's not the full tributary, it's just a chunk of it that's sort of falling apart as, as they, you know, kind of in their words. So they're, they're going to come back to us with a more full presentation on that project. They weren't super prepared to discuss it because it's not fully baked yet. So, you know, when we hear stream restoration, we feel like it's, it's worth pursuing, but we need to do it within the terms that RA is happy with, which is what we reiterated to them.
I just want to say thank you so much for day one, you, Ben, Mike, being on top of it. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Director Malick?
Thank you for everything that you've done. I always, I was contacted by several members about the same subject and their concern. And initially, about a month or so ago, it was very hot. How dare, you can't do this, got to be on top of this and so on. Thank you for everything that you've done, and I think it's critically important that you've established a relationship with the county to work this together. As you mentioned, they're about two, three years away. Do you think this will give everybody, us, you, staff, enough time to at least, let me use the word influence, or just work with them, coordinate, collaborate, to do it the right way so that both the members are happy and the county is doing the right job?
So I would really like to compliment the staff that I spoke to this afternoon at the county for listening to what we had to say. They really, they really were listening, and they said, look, there's, we can go back and take a look to make sure we meet the minimum requirements. We want this to happen because of our state requirements, but they also don't want pitch forks. They don't, they just don't, they just don't. So I applaud them for listening to us. I, I think we can move forward in a manner that suits all of us, but I just want to reiterate for those who may be listening, this is not tomorrow, this is years from now.
So that, if, if, I'll just finish with this, if I may. And I think it's really important that you communicate this in so many different ways to the affected members within A, so that they know that you're on top of this, and that you have a plan, you've got the relationship with the county, you're trying to work everything so that everybody's happy. I think communication is really important on this, and the more you communicate, the better.
Understood.
Thank you.
Director Fer.
As I've explained to Mr. Lusk, one of these kind of projects was done in my cluster. And the folks that we dealt with understood that we didn't want any more trees taken down than absolutely necessary. And the result of that meant that instead of using a big D9 caterpillar to bring in the material and all of that kind of stuff, that they used Bobcats, and they used hand tools in order to get the work done. And that substantially reduced the number of trees that had to be removed. And it does mean that the contractor is going to take longer to get the work done because you're using a smaller shovel, effectively, right? But this is RA land, subject to RA covenants, and much like in that situation, I had to sign the DRB application because it was on our cluster's property. So when this comes back, RA submits, is going to have to make the submission to DRB. That gives us a lot of control.
Yes.
If we don't like it, we don't have to sign, even though it is an easement, we don't have to sign the DRB application. So the other thing I'll tell you is that sometime, and we had this at my cluster, folks can get really upset about this big, great big tree being taken down, but sometimes the tree has been so undercut, the bank that supports the tree has been so undercut that if you leave the tree up, there's a real serious threat that the tree will fall down on somebody's house.
Correct.
So we have, we didn't have this, but RA has this. We have three arbiters on, on the staff. And so their evaluation of the trees that are proposed to be removed would be important for us to take into consideration as we go forward so that healthy, well, well-established trees aren't being removed. So hopefully that all can be folded in, but now, DRB's got to approve it.
Got to communicate it.
And we have to, and, and the association, either you or Mr. Cummins, will have to sign, sign the application that goes to the DRB.
Correct.
Director Perry? Oh, I'm sorry, Director Justin.
To follow up on, on your statement, I just want to make sure, Mac, do you agree that on projects where RA land is in consideration, that Reston Association needs to submit it, submit the application to the DRB? Do you agree that's the process?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Director Malick?
I've, I've read, read through this, but maybe if, being a new board member, if you could give a 60 second kind of background, I know you guys have been talking about this issue for, for some time, I think it would be helpful. Sure. So last year, 2024, Ben Rhodes, our watershed manager, came to me and said, the county has a planned project around Barton Hill related to storm water, unsure of what the scope is, but because he's in those circles, he knew that something was coming. The county, you know, in Ben's regular work, he kind of came upon this and said, hey, this is a bigger deal than we thought it might be, we should, you know, pay more attention to it. And then it came to us as staff through the membership. So our immediate action was to call the project manager, she brought her supervisor with her, we walked the site two separate times to gain a better understanding of the scope. We've met with membership, various different members a few times on the site. I think we were at a place where we were hearing some things, unsure of what the next steps were, elevated it to, to higher level staff within the county, and that's how we ended where we are today. I feel in the probably month or so of dealing with this, I feel like we have a pretty square handle on what's going on now. And I, they have no reason to feed us wrong information, it's only in their benefit to help us, and they, I think they were also appreciative of us kind of forwarding their concerns. I think we mentioned this the last time we discussed this, there are lots of levels to storm water in Fairfax County. So for us to find the right staff took some time, but I think we did find the right person, and I, I feel like we're in the best place we've been on this in the last month or so. And maybe just a quick follow up. The biggest concern to the RA members was it, the loss of, of tree canopy? Correct. Okay. I did see the tree inventory. Well, one, one of them, one, one of the concerns, so when you look at this, if you, if you have no background or other information and you look at this drawing, you go, whoa, this is very different than what is currently on the site. So it took a lot of research and explaining and understanding the purpose and how much impervious surface is going to be included and how much, how many trees are going to come down. The county has committed to doing a different tree survey than they initially completed. So trees are, are one aspect, but others include, we, the neighbor, the neighbors have expressed they do not want a built environment replacing what is now a natural environment. And I think what we heard from county staff today is there are, there are ways to look at this differently, and they were open to doing that. Thank you.
Director Sant.
Can I, I was in move topics, if everyone's done with Barton Hill. Favorite street of mine?
Think we're good. Think we're good.
Okay. With Reston Town Center North, this is a question for Mac or whomever, I guess. Do you still need guidance on how DRB is proceeding? You and I have talked about this and I think this came back from a different meeting where we had talked about design review guidelines. And I'm just curious, A, remind me what we talked about and then also help get Matt on board.
I think there's a couple of questions in there. You may recall that the development team had asked to want to go see the DRB specifically to be able to talk about the street grid network and the central green. They asked to be able to do that early on in the process to get some level of assurance that the DRB was still consistent with previous conceptual reviews. The RA board indicated that the new process at that time was that they should start with the land use committee, but decided not to allow the project to be heard by the land use committee. So the entire thing came to a stall. In a separate conversation, one of the things that the RA board said that it wanted to do was look at adopting new design guidelines to help give guidance to the DRB around that conversation. The intent of that at the time, since going back to the end of last year, early this year, was that those design guidelines would be in place such that the DRB could review the project prior, well prior to the adoption of the PRC plan, assuming that's going to happen eventually at the county. We've probably gone through between half and two thirds of that total time at this point, well, maybe half. So I'm not sure where that stands in terms of whether the board wants to continue to pursue that, the adoption of new design standards. I would expect from previous conversations, I think former President Mopar would, would concur with this, this came up frequently in our discussions with Supervisor Alcorn, that they would very much like to coincide working with RA and, and having a DRB approval right around the PRC plan approval. So, and that schedule has been furnished to everyone. So at this point, I think to answer that question, I would expect the development team, I would just say, because it's several people trying to facilitate a land swap and subdivision, to approach RA and want to submit for a DRB submittal. And then separate, sorry, and separate from that, notwithstanding the direction not to allow the project to go to land use committee, the process for reviewing the PRC plan being separate than the design guidelines and DRB component, separation totally between the two entities, the PRC plan and proposed proffers and all the other sort of language that's in there, not the design elements, goes to the land use committee for a recommendation then to come to the board. The board would presumably then adopt a position on the PRC plan and authorize the president or CEO to be the spokesperson to approach the county on that. So that's kind of a general status update of RTC.
Mr. President. I, I think there needs to be some clarification on the prior board action. Previously, the development team wanted to come to the land use committee to only talk about the central green. And the board said, uh-uh, you're coming to land use committee, we're going to talk about the whole site, the whole property. I'm seeing heads nodding around the table agreeing with me. So that's what the board said. Bring the whole package to land use committee, not just a little piece. They have now filed their whole package and it's time for them to go to the land use committee and for the land use committee to review the whole package, which is several hundred pages. The proffers alone are dozens and dozens and dozens of pages with mistake after mistake after mistake after mistake. So I think it's time for the land use committee to take this matter up and that taking it up, we're not, it would not be in conflict with our prior board action because the board action was, no, we're not going to do this thing piecemeal, we want to do it all at once. And I'm seeing heads nodding around the table. If there's somebody who disagrees with that view, I hope they would speak up. But my expectation is that we'd have Mr. Sampson, who represents Inova, be invited to a land use committee meeting here in the next, you know, several months so that we can go through them and ask him a lot of questions about his proffers, which are intriguing.
Mac, are you, are you in a position, Mac, to follow what the land, land, land use resolution says and invite Mr. Sampson to present?
Sure. Nothing that I mentioned and Director Farrell mentioned are in conflict in any way. So I just expect concurrent things to want to be occurring. So there's a land use committee conversation around the PRC plan and there's a DRB conversation around design elements.
And do you feel like you're in a good path to execute on the DRB portion of this? Or do you still need, what else do we need? If, if anything, I guess is my question.
There's a little bit of a value based question in that. So previously, the RA board had given direction that you wanted to create new design guidelines for RTC. So in answering that question, I would say, yes, I think we do have what we need to review based on previous DRB, I won't say decisions because they were more like check in guidance, things that happened. If the board, my advice to you at this point in time would be we probably separate out any vertical element design guidelines, meaning what buildings look like, as you heard from Supervisor Alcorn, that's coming substantially later. And perhaps the DRB can, you know, have design discussions around the grid network, which looks at first blush, haven't gotten all the way into it, fairly similar to what they showed to the DRB at the last check in.
Is there a last question? Is, do we need to, when should we do the next check in on this topic to just get a status update on process progress with whatever DRB is doing with new design guidelines? Should they want to do them because they're independent?
I can certainly prepare for your next regular meeting, meaning not May 29th, which is budget only, but your June meeting, a schedule and what different processes and checkpoints would look like. We, we approached DRB about the idea of creating new design guidelines because the board asked if that would be possible. I, I don't know that they were expecting that at the time, but I'm happy to check back in with DRB as well.
Yeah.
Director Justin.
Can someone remind me what, what our motion was related to these design guidelines? Does anyone know what meeting we passed it in?
I looked at our motion tracker and it was in motion, I think it was.
I think it was just discussion.
It was discussion.
I don't recall a motion.
It was in motion. I've, I've looked.
Okay, so at this point, it wasn't a motion, we think it was a discussion.
It was, Mr. President, with your permission, I, I think our CEO volunteered to help develop those guidelines for this project. And I don't think we needed a motion because he was prepared to undertake the task. So we didn't need to make a motion, he said, I'm going to go do this.
And as I recall, if I may, just add one more thing. I recall that there was not a motion, but I could be wrong, but it was a discussion, just like what Director Farrell suggested, explained. And I think it's sort of, because we were asking for the total package, there was a little bit of hesitation, well, should we go do this or wait for, to see what the reaction is on the county? And I think that's what the conversation was, at least during my term with, with the CEO. Well, let's see what they want to do, we can get them. And I believe there was a meeting between DRB and Mac and what was the other one? Just the DRB, to basically socialize this. And they were ready, they were ready and willing to help and get this started. So that's the extent of it.
Okay, so we think that DRB is interested in doing design guidelines?
I, I want, I want to speak for the whole DRB. We approached the chair and suggested, you know, and asked, if the RA board wants to talk to you about this, would you be willing to have a joint meeting with the board to talk about what such a scope would look like? That's the process part that has been trying to be agendized several months running now to try to understand scope, schedule and budget for such an exercise because they, they're not really sure of what the ask would be. And, and I wasn't completely sure too, not knowing the scope of what to take to them.
Okay. I, I would be in favor of having a, a discussion with the DRB. I'm not sure I'm in favor of creating design guidelines. I think there's some pros and cons to developing them. And we have also approved several properties in Reston without design guidelines related to new development. And so I'm not sure I'm ready to really pull the trigger on it, but I'm certainly open to a conversation.
So if I might, separate from this conversation, but certainly Jermaine, our governing documents contemplate that we should be having an annual meeting, joint meeting of the DRB and the board, and that has not occurred since I've been here. And these are the exact kinds of questions we should be asking from a philosophical standpoint so we can put together work plans, you know, that satisfy everybody's needs. Why don't I just go look at the calendars and schedules and figure out how all that works? The critical path part of this is the, I mean, I think the PRC plan is a big deal, but that's going to run through, it's just kind of legislative review, land use committee and board. But it, it's the grid network and the central green. And those are things that everybody has already seen in one form, you know, or another. So if those things go ahead and advance to DRB, let's look at a logical schedule or you can get together with DRB and we can add this to the work program for the, for the other components, you know, and there's a lot, no doubt. This is a phased development over a lot of years and we can, if you want to do that, we can figure out how to put those together over the right time horizon.
Director Perry.
Thank you. So I am all for a DRB board, RA board joint meeting. I've said this a couple of times actually, but I would, I would request that that meeting not be limited only to RTC North because I think there are other things that we need to make sure that we're all on the same page for because there are a number of things I've seen that I think in, as a general rule, the DRB may be on a separate page than we are as to what is appropriate in general. You know, we're not looking to look like Las Vegas, for example.
No.
So just, that would be my request for that meeting, that it not be limited only to. And then I have another question about another topic, so I want to make sure that we're good.
Still within the CEO updates?
Yes.
Please.
Okay. There is discussion in here about the observation project for the facility master plan, which I think is wonderful. I just, will that include all of our facilities or are you pinpoint? We have a number of facilities that have clearly been overlooked for a long time, including facilities that some people, at least on prior boards, didn't even know existed. So I want to make sure, like, what, how are we reviewing that? Because I don't want to continue leaving those behind, which is what I think is happening.
Thank you so much for pointing that out. I thought it was going to go overlooked. Thank you. So as we're, as we're working our way through the draft of this plan, we have really good data for some of our facilities. We know pool data inside out and backwards. We could have better tennis data, but we know people are using tennis courts. The purpose of doing some volunteer observation is mostly for multipurpose courts. We have a lot of them. And if you look at the capital plan, if you look at the reserve study, if you look at anything else we do regarding multipurpose courts, we have no idea who's out there unless we get some observation data. The same is true of tot lots. I've heard lots of feedback about should we replace tot lots or not? Sorry, playground. Should we replace playgrounds or not? Is this playground used at all? And the only way we're going to know is if we get a good look at them. So what we've wanted to do is wait until school's out to get our best sort of look. We're going to mix up weekends, weekdays, times, places, things like that. But the purpose of the, of having some volunteers take a look is for facilities that don't have great user data so that we have a better understanding of what's used and what's not.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments on CEO updates? Director Jessack.
I have two topics. One is, Mac, could you give us an update on Isaac Newton Square? Have we met with those developers? That project's getting pretty far down the road and I'm worried that we, have we had enough meetings with them? Do we know where they are in, as far as resubmitting their proffers?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm not seeing any recommendations in your memo by staff regarding any of the SSPAs. So outside the golf course, because I think we covered that one. Which ones would you suggest that we speak to or advocate for during the upcoming meetings?
I was going to address that, Director Jessack, but you go ahead.
We can tag team it, we can share it.
Well, I asked for a graphic. Do we have that graphic?
Sure. Do you want me to answer the question or no?
If you can start answering the question while Pete brings up the graphic.
I mean, did you want to start at an earlier point, more elementary point?
Uh-uh.
Okay, then I guess yes, thank you.
So we anticipate having a discussion with the board after a land use committee recommendation on each of the SSPAs. Now, what we've never talked about with the board is, should that be the universe of all SSPAs and comment at the time of the work program discussion, which of course is happening at Planning Commission next week, or is it through the evaluation and analysis part? We did anticipate that the land use committee would have been talking about them last month, but everyone recalls that meeting did not happen. So as we move forward, our intent would be to advise you all which ones create the most impact, if that's the right term, for RA. And, but ideally, we would have a position on each one, even if that's no comment at the current time. And there's a lot of factors that go into that. So some may have residential that we're looking to get into the association, some may create impacts that we need to ask for, whether it's traffic improvements or, you know, some sort of contribution to RA because it's right on the periphery and impacts us in some way. You know, all those different factors, but there's a ton this year. So I guess to answer your question, yes, we anticipate having those recommendations for you, but the first step would be land use committee.
Okay, so I, we're out of time. Because the board's going to move forward with our work program on June 10th and next meeting is a budget meeting for us. So I was hoping that staff outside of even the, I know the land use committee didn't get to it, but I was hoping staff would have some guidance for us. So I was kind of surprised to see you kind of speak to it, but it not being your memo. I do have at least one motion I'd like to do related to an SSPA, but I, I will yield the floor if you want to go over your map.
Yeah. Mr. President, with your permission, in looking at the SSPAs that are proposed for Reston, if you can look at this map, oh, you're so good. So there are five nominations that the staff wants to bundle into a Reston study again. Now, just for everybody's knowledge here, we rewrote the Reston master plan in 2017. We rewrote it again in 2023. And here we come with a recommendation to, let's see, there are three, can I, I'm going to go up here. And the staff recommendation is to take these four applications and combine it with a Comstock application that literally runs from the east side of Wheelie.
John, can you take your microphone up with you so that the folks?
Sure. Sorry, thank you. So the staff has a recommendation, the county staff has a recommendation to combine these four applications here on the western, the eastern part of, of Reston. So here's the WNOD trail and here are three applications here. This is Alexander Bell and these are three others. And they want to combine that in with this application from Comstock. So effectively, what they're asking to do is to do the Reston comprehensive plan all over again. These applications here are basically throw, throw a drawing up against the wall and not a very complete drawing. Similarly with the Comstock application, I mean, maybe that's where the casino is going, I don't know. But they basically want to have the county study fixing a zone, a master plan that was adopted in 2023, 2013, and then re, 2017, sorry, and then re-adopted in 2023. Well, let's look at it again. Well, when you adopt a comprehensive plan, the understanding is going to last for 20 years, not two years. And by putting these all together, you effectively are saying, let's go back and do a TSA study again. So, Mr. President, I'm, this application at Alexander Bell has been filed concurrently with a rezoning. So we can actually. So we can actually look at the rezoning and know what they want to do. The others, I have no idea what they want to do. I mean, it is no more than a sketch. And the idea that we're going to, we're going to put the people of Reston through another study of the Comstock holdings and other parties who aren't, because several of these units, several of these properties, Comstock doesn't control. And the idea that we're going to go through this again is foolishness. So, and maybe, and the reason I'm bringing this up now is, as we, as we mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission's going to make, is going to have a workshop next week. And we've already directed you to oppose any further consideration of the, of the Reston National application.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
She's asking if that motion failed.
No, that motion passed.
That motion passed.
That motion passed. So it was the follow, the follow-on motion to send it back. So I, I'm, if the board's not comfortable in making these decisions tonight, I can understand. But I am concerned that the county staff is proposing to go forward with these. And I don't think we need yet another study of the Reston TSA area. We've done it. We've done it twice. Why do we need to do it again? And maybe we've got a chance to do something before the 20th. But I'm, I don't think we need yet another study of those five applications. I think they can, we don't need them to be studied at all. And it might be in our best interest to communicate that thought to the Planning Commission. But I, I'm at the, I'm at the pleasure of the board here. And, and this is where, if you're going to say something, you would say it on the 15th.
Director, moment.
Maybe just a clarifying question.
Sure.
Fairfax has dispositioned each of these SSPAs into one of four categories, tier one, two, three, and do not work. Would it not be in our best interest to have staff look at tier one and come back with a analysis on tier one and tier two and tier three and do not work and wait?
I'm, I'm, the ones I've identified are the tier one cases, the only tier one cases. And I'm suggesting that the ultimate position I would hope the board would take is, we don't need to do this. We've done it. We've done it twice in 10 years. We don't need to do it yet again. But if the board, and to have that thought communicated to the Planning Commission next Thursday night. But if the board's not prepared to do that, I would, I think we're going to get there. And the sooner we say that to them, the better off we are.
Director Justin.
My expectation is that the staff would already have this information for us. We, like, we've been, they've been out for a while now, and they've been able to be studied. So I'm going to motion that the board take a position against Fairfax County staff's SSPA nomination recommendation to consider a plan amendment for the Reston transit station area.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any comments?
Can you explain the practical effects of that?
Yeah, yeah. What?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to allow staff to supplement or add on. But I, I think that John really already hit the point. We, we did a, we did a review of the TSA in two different years that are close to here. We do not need to be opening the TSA again. When we, as a comprehensive planning task force, and we had an RA representative, we had a voice on that task force. When things go on to the staff tier one plan, the staff go back and they study it. And then they bring forward whatever they're going to bring forward. And it's not a, it's not a community process. It is a staff process. It's a community process on the backside when they're telling you, this is what we, this is what we're going to propose to do, and then you get to comment. So it's like not having your, it's not like, you're not sitting at the table with them and saying, hey, what should we do with TSA? There are a lot of things that we spent three years working on in the TSA. It is not the time to reopen the TSA in Reston. Our community has had enough. We have welcome development. And we have a plan, we have a recent plan, and we should not be reopening the full TSA.
Any further comments?
I motion to table the motion. And I need a second. And it's not debatable, and it's not amendable, and it requires a vote of the majority.
I second that.
All right. Were there any comments on this motion?
You can't, it's not debatable.
Oh.
It's a motion to table, which means it can be taken up at any other time.
You need to set the time. Otherwise, it's indefinite.
June, June 1st.
Subsequent motion to take it from the table. And that would mean we have no, nothing to say about this next Thursday.
The motion's been made and seconded, and let's vote. All in favor? One, two, that's two, four, against. It's three, against, and abstaining. Two. Okay, motion fails. Okay.
That was my last thing.
All right. So back to Jennifer's motion. That was seconded, correct?
I did.
Okay. Were there any further comments? Director Mappar.
Just a clarification. The motion asks for action. Who's going to do the action on the motion? Is it to the staff?
Yeah, it was that the board takes a position and directs staff to take the action to speak against the opening of the TSA.
Just for clarification, I, it's my understanding that President Johnson is going to be speaking next week. And my thought would be he would incorporate these remarks into.
Yeah. It's staff writing it, and our spokesperson.
Spokesperson, that's what I was getting at.
Right, is, yes. Yes. That's the typical process. But I'm happy to amend the language if we want to clarify it.
Okay. I think we're fine.
Okay.
I think we're fine. All right. Further comments, questions? All right, let's vote. All in favor? One, two, and three. Against? And abstaining. Four, three, zero, four. I'm not sure how that works with extensions.
It fails.
It fails?
Fails. We have four votes, so we won't be taking any positions next Thursday.
Mr. President, I have one just general comment. I will continue to endeavor to achieve the board's expectations. I hear you, Director Justcheck. There were some fairly assertive comments there about what the staff should have done. I don't know if we've ever discussed the expectation from a board standpoint regarding timing, but I am happy to continue to try to make sure we hit that mark.
One last item, Mr. President, on the CEO update.
Yes.
Several months ago, we voted to direct staff to send a letter to those who are with the county are developing the Unified Cemetery District. Where are we on, and to suggest that Small District Number Five be a pilot project for that exercise? Where are we?
That's a CAM project.
The, the letter has been sent. The letter has been sent.
Has been sent?
Yes.
Okay. Can we get a copy?
Sure.
Please? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I am motion, I move that we turn into executive session on contractual matters, personnel matters, and consultation with counsel.
Second.
I'm sorry, Director Perry had something.
Oh. I, I apologize. I always find it interesting that we agree to take the break after we're in executive session so people don't realize that we're taking a break, and then it looks like our executive session is 20 hours long. So I have no problem with moving into executive session as long as it includes a bio break and that we make that public so that we are transparent in that we are doing that within that timeframe.
So I will motion that we take a 10-minute bio break and then enter executive session to discuss contractual matters, personnel matters, and consultation with counsel.
Second it.
And as far as comments, I am always in support of full transparency when it comes to bio breaks.
And I would ask that counsel remind us when he makes his prepared motion suggestions to us that maybe we change the motion to always be that.
Well, we need to vote on the.
Or a better form of that.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous of all in attendance.
Okay, I run into.
Okay, I run into the...
Okay, thanks. So we are back from executive session. I believe we have some motions.
I move the Reston Association Board of Directors certified to the best of each member's -- oh, motion.
Yeah, cleansing then time.
No, because if we would end by operation if we don't extend.
So I move to extend the meeting to 10:55 p.m. Second.
All in favor? Unanimous of all attending?
I move that the Reston Association Board of Directors -- that's a cleansing motion?
Yeah.
That's what I'm doing. I'm so -- move that the Reston Association Board of Directors certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session of a contractual nature involving personal matters or involving consultation with council were discussed or considered by the board during executive session.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous of all here?
Move to approve William Peggis for the position of member of the covenants committee and chair of the covenants committee.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? That's six. Against? One. And no, since.
Move that in accordance with the association's policies on purchasing and procurement to approve the contract of Oden, Feldman, and Peddleman for the labor and employment legal services in the not to exceed amount of $100,000.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor? That's six. Against? I'm staying. Six zero one. Motion passes.
Move to approve the draft agenda topics as presented for the special board of directors meeting agenda on May 20, 2025.
Question?
We need a second.
It's after it's seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, sir.
So tonight we had motions that didn't carry that relate to the Reston National Golf Course.
The resolution.
Does it make any sense to add them for the next session?
It's a -- do you -- it's fiscal, so.
July or June 12?
We could still do it during July 12. I mean.
But this is May 29.
Oh, May 29.
May 29 is the fiscal meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
My motion's for the May 29 meeting. We don't have an agenda for the June.
I don't have an agenda for it. So we had adopted the agenda.
Unless you want to change it.
At the end of this one?
Yeah.
Okay, well, there are several motions that we kind of left undone that would need to be picked up in that agenda.
Mm-hmm. The calendar being one.
Calendar is one. Reston National and LUC is two. There was a motion about an initiative to educate the apartment owner members on the impact of the TSA homes that aren't part of RA. Trying to think, there might have been -- was there something else that we left hanging? Director Judge Sack, I'm looking at you. PRC will come back to us.
We need a committee resolution and board committee resolutions.
Right, well, I don't know that's going to be ready for June 2 there because there's a lot of work that we have yet to do, at least based on our prior conversations, Director Santa. Okay, I'm okay with this agenda, given that it's a joint meeting.
Director Justin.
So item H is Biano operating budget kickoff. I've made comments in the past that if we do not drive the agenda to where we're trying to achieve results, then we end up here till midnight. And I think that that's what are we trying to achieve as a board during that? What are our expectations for that presentation that it looks like Mr. Rum is assigned to? What are we looking for?
Mac, we don't have Ed, so could you answer that for us?
No, I can help you. I mean, what I'm trying to achieve in that meeting is we had hoped that we might be able to have a discussion with you all about the capital options. You may recall that you decided to push that back. So we think that is really necessary to try to help set up a productive budget discussion. There's a series of topics that fit within each of those things that we think add up to what we need to get the budget season kicked off. But I do think there's some very key strategic things you need to ask and answer in that meeting. And of course, they will be put in your packet. But these would be things like, it comes up each year, are we going to have a negative budget? Yes, no. Is there a maximum assessment increase? Should we be thinking about that? Yes, no. It's the wild fluctuations in the budget process that board members have expressed some concern about in the past. We also plan to do an operating budget review to try to hopefully ask and answer any questions about the operating budget as early as possible, in addition to some video things. So we think we have -- we've taken all the feedback from the after action report that we went over, as well as some discussion with the fiscal committee in putting together that agenda.
Mr. President?
Britten had her hand up.
Do we need another motion to extend? It's 10:50.
10:55. We have time.
We have five minutes to go.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It seems to me that one of the things I would hope we get some feedback on is the issue I picked up that I picked up with the board a while ago about the board needing to approve every capital expenditure over $5,000. That number is ridiculously low, in my humble opinion.
Number I.
You think that's a number I? I didn't think it was. Is that where we're going to have that conversation? Grand.
Fantastic. Director Perry, did you have something? Okay.
All right. So I have one more thing, which is I thought we were getting the first draft of the capital projects at this one? No?
Yeah, it's sorry.
Is it?
So in item -- so you'll be hearing a lot from me on the 29th. I apologize for that in advance. But in item G, you will see a first draft of the CIP with alternative funding options. So we can change it to first draft CIP and alternative options if you'd like. That's fine.
If you could do that, that'd be great.
That's no problem.
So I don't think I ever got a second.
I did.
You did?
All right, so.
So we're making that edit?
Yeah, as of mine.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, all in favor? Unanimous of all attending?
Before you adjourn, can I ask, the pool assessment, can, once you've got it done, can we get it before the normal package?
My plan is to record my presentation and send the report to all of you next week.
This coming week?
Yeah, so you'll have two weeks before. And I will probably offer, if you want to come and meet with me too, I'll probably offer that as well.
That'd be great.
Not Izzy, but others.
Make a calendar appointment.
All right, we are just about to adjourn. But before we do, I want to again thank everyone who came out to make their voices heard tonight. And I want to make the community rest -- let the community rest assured that this board is still consistently standing behind the resolution that we've created. We are not making any adjustments to our position with regards to the golf course.
And you will be testifying.
And I will be testifying to the county to that effect sometime next week. All right? Thank you very much, everybody, and have a great rest of the week.